Let's see, there it is. Looks like we're ready to go.
Okay, it's, uh, it's four o'clock, are we on? Okay, it's four o'clock, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Salina City Commission to order. I will ask staff if confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Those who are able, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no awards or proclamations today. With that, we will have Citizens Forum. This is a chance for individuals to come up front and discuss issues that are not on the agenda. We will, please, limit your comments to five minutes, and please state your name and address when you come approach the podium.
Deborah Corrales, 124 East Charlotte. I brought this picture today because I introduced you to Gizmo at the last meeting, that's Gizmo's owner, so although I come up here and I talk about dogs, I'm really talking about the people that have them, especially the ones that are called pit bulls, and they aren't. According to the organization responsible dog owners of the western states, there are currently seventy-five banned or restricted breeds in the United States. Worldwide, the breeds of dogs banned or restricted is also surprising. In the Ukraine, there are eighty breeds banned and restricted, including one of America's most popular dogs, the Labrador Retriever. In Bermuda, you will need to take extra precautions if you walk your Australian cattle dog in public. And in Ireland, you must be sixteen years of age and have your dog muzzled if you're planning on taking your Rhodesian Ridgeback off your property. Italy had a list of ninety-two banned and restricted breeds, a list that included the bearded collie and corgi, until policymakers came to the realization that it is more effective to hold the owner than the breed responsible for the actions of a specific dog. Many experts have also observed that public perception of which breeds are most dangerous have changed throughout the decades. In the seventies, Dobermans were singled out. In the eighties, German Shepherds were targeted. In between the eighties and nineties, Great Danes held the title for two years. In the nineties, it became the Rottweilers. BSL keeps responsible owners from having these dogs, not the ones you think you're keeping the dogs from. The people you don't want to have these dogs, have these dogs. Although there have been many studies on the effectiveness of BSL, there is no evidence to support the notion that some breeds of dogs are more inherently dangerous than others, or that banning ownership of certain breed lowers the bite rate. In fact, the American Kennel Club, the American Veterinary Medical Association, the National Animal Control Association, the American Bar Association, and a list of others, including the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, say national organizations, these are organizations that oppose BSL and recognize the inequities and inherit falsifies in such laws. First and foremost, it is difficult to enforce. Many animal control agencies use a very vague list of breed characteristics to determine whether a dog is considered a certain breed. The time spent on breed identification takes time away from important tasks that could impact the community for the better. It is also very difficult for public officials to enforce such provision in a fair and effective manner. So I got some reports from our local shelter. In the last two years, we've had ninety-six pit bull type dogs pass through our doors. And if you take ninety-six dogs and multiply the average household of three, you get two-hundred-and-eighty-eight people that were affected by you taking a dog that may or may not, based on sight alone, be a pit bull, not a pit bull. So our population in 2019 was forty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-two. That is one pit bull type dog for every four-hundred-and-ninety-two residents that are affected by BSL. Ninety-six, nine of those ninety-six are still in doggy jail. No proof that they are or aren't pit bulls, and I would really like to see the city invest sixty dollars per dog doing DNA tests so that we're getting the dogs you don't want here. Thank you.
Tyler Sartain, 233 North Kansas Avenue, excuse me. I just would like to know the cost, that the animal shelter has to go through housing these dogs. That way, we can see what the animal shelter is spending and how they can better use those funds to help other animals as well, just because focusing on one group of animals does cost more. I believe the, is, one of the shelters in Kansas City spent twenty-four percent of their million-dollar budget on their animals for the pit bull dog. So I just want to know how much it costs our city for that, 'cause I know that's a hard topic to talk about with money and having to spend it, so, thank you.
Actually, if I could just follow up on that, that's information that I think I would find helpful as well. I can't speak for any of the other commissioners, but knowing what we spend housing dogs that we've identified as pit bull, or having pit bull in them, it might be a nice to be able to do a cost-benefit analysis in terms of whether it doesn't serve our purpose better to, you know, do a DNA check before we commit to having a dog for, say, like, six months. I mean, I don't know how much it costs us to board the animals per day, but I think if we had some idea about what we're investing in that, I know animal services staff indicated that they spend a considerable amount of staff time dealing with animals that have been identified as pit bulls, so it might just be more information for us to have when we're going forward and looking at how we proceed with our identifications and what the costs and the benefits are to what we're doing now, to what we could be doing.
So I'm not aware that that's a cost that's been calculated currently, and it's an exercise that could be conducted if the commission would like. With respect to DNA testing, that was discussed a while back, and my understanding is that was really an issue of admissibility in municipal court, and the original intention was to use the DNA testing for the purpose of, you know, prosecution in court possibly, and by rules of evidence, the actual technician that conducted the DNA test in whatever state that might have been would have to be physically present to testify, so that's why we discontinued use of DNA testing.
I'm just thinking in terms of like, because as Ms. Corrales has demonstrated for us and Mr. Sartain, week after week, I mean, there are issues with, you know, identification issues, so if we've got ten dogs impounded right now, and of those ten, three don't have whatever the tipping point, or any, like, pit bull genetics, then that frees up three spaces at the shelter that we could be using for other dogs that we know that we have a chance to place, and the corresponding staff time. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming at it from, but I just think it would be good information to have if staff can, has a calculation of how many, what it costs per day, and how many days, and how many dogs we've done.
I'm guessing they have an idea of what they, what it runs them, no matter what type of dog it is, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they give a plus, some.
Some multiplier, so if they could just give us a ballpark, I don't really.
Yeah, agreed.
Any other comments?
I personally think it's a waste of the staff's time. I don't intend to change my opinion about the ban on the, on the BSL, so I hate to see staff spend their time on this kind of matter when they could devote that to all the rest of their duties.
Like I said, a quick calculation and estimate, they probably, maybe they can come up with something. I don't want a lot of time spent, but just give us an idea.
And I think that's where I was coming from, too. I realize that we're not at the point where we're looking at reconsidering any kind of a BSL policy change, I mean, we sent a pretty clear message on that. I'm just looking at in terms of where we're spending our resources, 'cause animal services did indicate that it's burdensome. They devote a lot of time to it, and I'm just trying to figure out, you know, since we're going to continue to have this policy in place, or this ordinance in place, what can we do to do it more effectively for both the owners and for both staff? So yeah, I'm not, not looking to revisit that subject.
Any other comments during open forum, or Citizens Forum, I should say? Okay, if not, we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, we will move to the consent agenda.
Item six point one, approve the minutes of February 24th, 2020. Item six point two, award contract for 2020 chip seal, project number 20013, to Circle Sea Paving and Construction LLC of Goddard, Kansas, in the amount of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, thirteen cents, with a fourteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-six-dollar, eighty-seven cent construction contingency. And item six point three, award contract for 2020 ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface, project number 20015, to AIPAC Kansas Incorporated of Salina, in the amount of six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, with a seventeen-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-dollar construction contingency.
Are there any items a commissioner would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I'd accept a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve six point one, six point two, and six point three as presented on the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes five zero. Okay, we will move down to Administration, seven point one.
Item seven point one, authorized purchase of a replacement portable sports court for the Tony's Pizza Event Center.
Mr. Cotton.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hoppick and members of the commission. Today's staff would like to seek authorization to allow the purchase of a replacement portable sports court from Horner Flooring for the Tony's Pizza Event Center in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars. This is a budgeted capital expense in the 2020 budget for up to one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. This price brings the project in twelve thousand, ten dollars under budget. Proposals received from Connors Flooring, Horner Flooring, and Robbins Flooring, which were included in the staff report for your review. This purchase will replace the court that was bought in 1999. Due to the unavailability of parts, this court is unserviceable and is a potential safety hazard for the Tony's Pizza Event Center staff that has to assemble and disassemble it. The existing court would be sold for reassembly as a permanent installation, and staff would ask the city commission to declare this court as a surplus in order that it could be sold. The funds for this sale could, would go to help offset the purchase of the new court. The court from Horner is in very good condition, has a year warranty, and was recently used at the NBA All-Star Game in Chicago. This court was manufactured in the spring of 2019, and while not brand-new, has been used sparingly. The court is recommended by Dan Rubino, Director of Projects for Spectra Venue Management, and Mike Highsmith, Director of Events and Operations for the Tony's Pizza Event Center. At this time, staff does recommend the purchase of the court from Horner Flooring in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars, using the fund balance of the Tony's Pizza Event Center Fund in lieu of issuing geo-bonds as originally suggested and approved as part of the budget process. Staff would also like the commission to declare the court purchased in 1999 as surplus. Susan Trafton, General Manager of the Tony's Pizza Event Center, and Mike Highsmith, Director of Events and Operations, are also in attendance to answer any questions the commission may have.
All right, go ahead. Anybody have questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think the only question I had was, did you just say now, it's a permanent installation, or it's still gonna be portable and being taken up and down?
The new court would still be portable. The old court could be sold as a permanent installation, as the parts to hold together no longer.
Okay, I gotcha. I gotcha, 'cause I was thinking, sorry about that. And then, I guess, is this court going to be better able to be, to withstand the rigors of being taken up and down more successfully than the one we had in the past that's no longer serviceable?
Yes, the court that we would be buying now is a true, all three companies use the same design now. The court we had, all companies were making different hardware changes, trying to come up with something better. And right now, everybody is trying to catch up to the court that we recommend. It has better-grade steel hardware, so.
Thank you, that's all I had.
We did get twenty years out of this floor, is that right?
Yes.
T-PAC has a fund balance. I'll have to say, I'm thrilled by that. But the question is, are all of the expenses in for 2019? I know there used to be a true up at the end of the year based on performance, and that could, that, if that's done, that's good. If it's not done, there's still a potential drawdown against its fund balance. Am I correct, incorrect? Here comes the expert.
Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. I think what you're talking about is the incentive pay that we typically pay.
Yes, yes.
Those are being expensed out in the year, the following year. So in 2019, we expensed what would have been the incentive pay for the previous year.
Okay, so it happens in the following year.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So we anticipate that all of the expenses have been, unless the auditors find something different.
Okay, thank you.
Do they refinish this court? 'Cause I realize that we're gonna make, you know, continue to keep it the Kurt Budke Court, and I didn't know if we were still gonna have the Chicago skyline on ours, so I didn't figure we would, so.
No, not that.
Wait a second, you want that?
I don't know, I didn't know if that was part of the motion, I didn't see it.
Does it really cool? Yeah, but no, included in that price is the cost of refinishing it. And all the supplies that we need, including racks and the paint and everything to add the logos and carts.
So I didn't know if they went in and redid, refinished it completely, so.
They want our direction over to our design.
Cool, okay. Any other questions? How about comments from the public? I did notice on the motion, it just talks about the purchase of the floor, it does not mention the current court being declared a surplus property. Do we need a separate motion on that, or should we add that to the current motion?
I think if you could at least add it to the current motion, that'd be helpful.
If someone making the motion would do that for me, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I move we authorize the purchase of the court from Horner in the amount, in the total amount of ninety-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety, using the fund balance of the Tony's Pizza Event Center Fund and declaring the former court excess. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the new floor for the Tony's Pizza Event Center. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, guys. Okay, that brings us to Administration, seven point two.
Item seven point two, purchase of duty handguns and holsters for the police department.
Mayor Hoppick and fellow commissioners, my name is Gary Hanus, I'm a captain with the Salina Police Department. I am before you today for consideration of the police department purchasing new department-issued handguns and holsters for those handguns. As you read in your commissioner's blue sheet, the department has evolved from the revolvers that we used to carry back in the 1990s to the current platform of the FNS semi-automatic handguns that we carry now. We are currently in our eighth year with this platform. The purchases of these handguns were included in last year's budgetary process, but the total combined amount is over twenty thousand dollars, so per city policy, I'm here before you today to, one, summarize our request for this purchase, answer any questions that you may have for this purchase, and obtain direction from the commissioners for these requested items. In March of 2018, Chief Nelson requested that the firearms instructors that we, which I am in charge of, that we do a testing and evaluation in preparation for the future to find a new firearm for the department in the near future. The unit, we did put together a testing evaluation process, we looked at three reputable handguns. At the conclusion of the testing and evaluation process, we did select the Glock 17, which is a nine-millimeter platform, compared to the forty-millimeter platform that we do carry now. We did select the nine-millimeter platform for a multitude of reasons, which was based upon what was best for the department and for the department's personnel. If these department-issued handguns are approved by yourself, we will need new holsters for said handguns. In analyzing the needs of the department and the members for the specific jobs that they are tasked with handling, we have identified one-hundred-and-fifty-nine holsters that the department will need to cover all those, and as stated in the blue sheet, you know, one officer could have as many as three or four different jobs on the department where they could, would need different holsters for each respective job. The bid process for the handguns, Glock as a company, they set the price for the handguns in the law enforcement industry. They tell the distributors, this is what you will sell a Glock handgun to. And Glock has, the United States broke up into regions, and we are in the Midwest region. There are only two distributors for Glock handguns for law enforcement in the Midwest region, which is GT Distributors out of Texas and Keesler Police Supply out of Indiana. I forget if I failed to say they are, one, four twenty-eight fifty is what the Glock sets the price at for Glock handguns. So basically, between these two distributors, we had to select which one we're going to use based upon, because the prices are the same, who was going to give us the best trade-in price for our FNs that we have. GT Distributors out of Texas was the highest trade-in price at two fifty, one fifty, so with your approval, in this process, we will be going with them. The bid process for the holsters, we looked at five different dealers, one locally, one within the state of Kansas, and three national companies, to try to find the best price that we could for the department and for the city. Again, we identified one-hundred-and-fifty-nine holsters, and of those five requests sent out to those businesses, we received four complete bids from them, and the low bid was Wilson Security Firearms and Tactical here in Salina, Kansas. And again, with your approval, we will be going with them. The department does wish to continue with our engraving process that we have done over the years. We negotiated a price with a company in Kansas City for a mere seven dollars and fifty cents per handgun, that we will go with them if everything is approved. Additional information we'd like you to know about the, our current handguns that we're on, on May, excuse me, on February 6th, officers and firearms instructors found two firearms that were cracked. The polymer frame on these FN forty handguns that we carry, there's, as you can see in the picture up here, this was one of them, which subsequently, we inventoried our entire handgun inventory to see if there were any more. We identified fourteen more upon the two that we found on February 6th, for a total of sixteen. These weapons were taken out of service immediately. We did contact representatives from our, the company of these FN handguns, and we were advised that there was nothing they could do due to the weapons being eight years old, and the company does not manufacture that model of handgun any longer, they've replaced it. On February 10th, City Manager Greg did approve an emergency purchase of Glock 17s, the guns that we would like, to replace the defective weapons that we found in inventory that the officers were using. In talking with GT distributors about this, they will not accept the guns with the defects in them. They basically say they're unsafe and have no trade-in value. This obviously will increase the overall price of this project. On February 12th, we did order eighteen Glock 17 Gen V handguns from GT distributors. The two additional were ordered just in case we find others during the process at some point. These eighteen weapons did cost us seven thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars, and they, these new guns are scheduled to be placed into service with the transition class this Thursday and Friday of this week. This request is for the purchase, again, of the remaining sixty-seven Glock 17 Gen V handguns for a total of eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, the engraving of six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and the one-hundred-and-fifty-nine holsters for fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents, for a total of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. This is a total cost of five thousand, ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents over what we budgeted last year when we went through the budgetary process. If this is approved, we will, we will absorb that in our present operation budget. Just as a side note, of the four thousand, of that five thousand, ninety-six dollars and ninety-one cents is as a direct result of these sixteen handguns that we are not able to trade into GT distributors. If this purchase is approved, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars, which was previously allotted in the 2020 budget, will be used for this purchase. Staff has identified the following five options for the city commission's consideration. One, approve the purchase of sixty-seven Glock 17 Gen V handguns from GT distributors for eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars, engraving for six hundred and thirty-seven fifty, one hundred and fifty-nine holsters, excuse me, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents from Firearms Engraving LLC, and one hundred and fifty-nine holsters from Wilson Security and Tactical LLC for fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents, totaling twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Two, approve with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate. Three, postpone consideration to a specified date and time and provide staff with direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for further consideration. Four, approve the purchase on first reading and provide direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for their further consideration at the time of the second reading. And then, five, vote to deny resulting in the police department not transitioning to a new handgun in 2020. Staff recommends option number one. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer, myself or Chief Nelson.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say a quick thank you for the commemorative coin that we, the 100th anniversary of the Salina Police Department commemorative coin that we received last week, so thank you for that. And then, first, second, I can't believe you found somebody to give you two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for those FNs, but well done, don't, don't, don't know how you manage that, that's a great trade-in value.
To answer that question, ma'am, it was a bid process, and it was fifty-one dollars and fifty cents more between the two companies.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's phenomenal, I'm glad you were able to, to realize that. And this may be more of a question for, for staff, but if additional weapons are found to be cracked, I'm assuming that that will fall beneath the purchasing threshold, so it won't require another action to come back and, and say, purchase another additional five or 10 weapons?
Yeah, actually, I don't think we'll need to purchase any additional weapons, it'll just impact our trade-in value, so it'll create a value that the police department will have to absorb.
I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, yeah, but it'll create a deficit, right, right.
Create more of a shortfall that the department will have to absorb.
Okay, okay. And then, this may be more for Chief Nelson question. Are 85 weapons going to be adequate once we are fully staffed, and where are we at, about in our staffing at this point?
That's a great question. We're at 81 today, I believe. And the reason we said 85, which is only one over, is because the availability of the Glocks, I mean, you can get them anywhere, versus the FN is much more difficult. We probably would have asked for more, but when we went 4,000 over budget because of the, them not taking our, we self-admitted the issue with the FNs, and we were punished for it, but it is what it is. They took away those 16 weapons that we would have got $250-some dollars for, so that kind of hurt us. But I think we'll be fine, but primarily because Glock is so much more prominent as far as out there for law enforcement, so I believe we'll be fine.
Okay, and it was nice to see that that, this firearm is the same one used by the Highway Patrol and by the Sheriff's Department, so, I mean, there's some nice redundancies there in terms of sharing our, you know, armory information or whatever, whatever you need to do with that. And also, just finally, I'm really glad you're switching to the 9-millimeter from the 40-cal, because that's gonna, that'll make be a significant savings in ammunition.
Yeah, no, that's true, and it's amazing, in my career, half the things that went full circle to, it's really more important what you hit, not what you're hitting it with, if that makes sense. And they went from a 9-mil to the 45, to the 40, and now it's come full circle back to a 9. And a 9 truly is much more inexpensive because it's a NATO round, and they make so many, NATO makes, you know, for the military, 9-mil. That's why it's cheaper to buy in bulk, and we buy a lot in bulk, thousands of rounds.
And so we, I mean, to the best of your knowledge, probably get another eight to 10 years out of this weapon then, as well?
I, yes, I think they'll do better than what we have, to be honest with you, but it really truly depends on how much you shoot it, though, to be honest with you, because everybody shoots different amounts of downrange. The SWAT cops might not last that long because they train so much more, but generally speaking, that's an accurate statement.
Thank you.
My question relates, and you alluded to it, is the shift from the, you know, it used to be 38s and 9s were kind of the standard, and then everybody shifted to the 40s and 45s. And one of the motivations for that, as I understand, is, you know, back in the late 1980s, early 1990s, there were a number of incidents that convinced law enforcement that the 9-millimeter, 38 caliber round did not have, have the ballistics necessary to stop a determined assailant. And I noticed in here, you talk about improved ballistics, and I'm presuming from that that the 9-millimeter round is now considered to be sufficient to protect the officers if they run across somebody who is, you know, determined.
Yes, sir. As Chief did say earlier, it's a matter of where you hit, not how big of a train you hit them with. But the evolution of 9-millimeter ammunition has evolved immensely, where I have gone to demonstrations where they have shown the effectiveness of 9-millimeter rounds proper, when properly placed, will, are as efficient as any round on the market.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add just one thing, that also, as compared to the 80s, 90s, we also have patrol rifles, patrol rifles in the majority of our cars, so we're not just bringing a handgun to a rifle fight. So that helps immensely, too, as far as the rounds that we carry on our sides.
I'm just curious, what does mounted light mean?
Weapon-mounted light?
Yeah. Versus otherwise?
Basically, it's a small light that fits on the bottom rail of your handgun that enables an officer in a low-light situation, in a lethal encounter situation, to have access to light without having another light in their hands. It's right there with them.
Okay, that completely makes sense. I thought it had to do with weight. Is there any customization to a gun for the size of the individual's hand? Is that?
Specifically for these, actually, all the handguns we looked at, well, yes, the handguns we looked at, they do come with the availability for four different sizes. The size that they come is as small as they get because it's a double-stack magazine 9-millimeter. They can't get it any smaller, but we can make it bigger for officers with extremely large hands. If I could add to that, because I have been involved in this T&amp;E test and evaluation for guns in a previous job, we definitely included people of different stature, females, men, whatever. We tried to cover everybody, and they unanimously picked the Glock as the best weapon. I would say if the weapon we chose, if it's just too big for anybody because of the whole double-stack issue, Glock does make a smaller handgun that we will buy if we have to for that particular officer, if they need it. We've done that before.
I'm a neophyte, so it's interesting to know. And because price fixing kind of rubs me the wrong way, is it at the norm across the country, that your, the price of the guns you purchase is fixed from whatever the vendor is?
From Glock, they set the price for law enforcement, not for the public sector, but for law enforcement. How about for others, for other manufacturers? Oh, other manufacturers? I do not know the answer to that question. Thank you.
I have a couple easy questions. You're, you're trading in the current 40-mil, do you trade in the holsters also, or is that a different, does, you just?
No, after carrying the weapons for about eight years, they really almost have no value, you know? And to be honest with you, FN is not a very common weapon platform at all for law enforcement, so we could, you know, offer them to somebody, but they'd have to have FN-40 just like we do, and that's probably not going to happen, to be honest with you.
Explain to me the engraving. Is that, so do you engrave each, each gun that you trade in? Whether, because I read where you will sell them to a current officer, is that correct?
Yes.
If he wants it?
Yes, every officer gets an opportunity to purchase their weapon for a little bit higher because of transfer fees and such, but yeah, every officer, and most of us do buy it because we carried it for X amount of years, but they get the first opportunity to buy it, and then whatever they don't, they trade in, but the money still goes towards the purchase of the new weapons.
So do you engrave the ones that the officers do not buy also?
No, these are engraved, the FNs are engraved.
Oh, they're already engraved?
Yeah.
So we're engraving the new ones?
To that, yes.
Okay, okay.
And these have, they say Salina Police, but they don't have the 1920, of course, on them, but it's just a nice touch to carry, because like I said, majority of officers will purchase the weapon that they own, and again, that money goes back towards the purchase of new weapons. It's not, doesn't go to us, per se.
And I'm, I'm sure you don't have this information right now, but, you know, based on the number of rounds that are, that are shot through each pistol each year, it'd be interesting to know the savings, you know, just estimate between shooting the 9-millimeter and the 40 at the range? You know, the cost savings, what that would be?
Practice rounds.
On a year, on an annual basis?
Yeah, the price difference between 40 and 9-millimeter training rounds are virtually the same, sir.
Okay.
It's, the duty rounds is where the difference comes in.
Okay, okay. I read that wrong. I thought it was, I thought there was a difference even in the, in the training rounds, so I was curious.
The cost savings is in the duty rounds.
In the duty rounds, okay.
One more little question. What do you do with the ammunition for the older?
Well, because we have been anticipating this for a while, we have not ordered near what we had before. And if we have, do you know, do you know how many we have?
We have six cases left.
Six, five?
So the officers could buy that if they choose to purchase?
We've done that in the past. We actually have done that in the past with that rounds. Yeah, they don't just sit there, we sell them back to the officer at cost, the rounds.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any comments from the public?
Tyler Sartain, 233 North Kansas Avenue. I think this would be a awesome thing, because I don't think we want to put the people who protect us in a situation where they're using a faulty weapon. I've seen faulty weapons backfire and explode and, you know, seriously hurt and killed somebody. So putting their lives in danger with faulty weapons, I would highly recommend option one. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back up front to the Commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve the purchase of 67 Glock 17 Gen 5 handguns from GT Distributors for $11,859, with an engraving fee of $637.50 from Firearms Engraving LLC, and 159 holsters from Wilson Security Firearms and Tactical LLC for $14,187.41, totaling $26,683.91.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to purchase 67 Glock 17s. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. Okay, and it looks like we have no development business to come before us today. How about any other business? Does any Commissioner have anything to bring before us? Okay, if not, we have an executive session. How long do we need for this?
10 minutes.
10 minutes. Okay.
Mayor Hoppick, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss the subject of potential legal action by the city with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 4:52.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I take it there'll be no action?
That's correct. No action expected.
Okay. With that, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
And for the record, it's seven minutes before 5 o'clock.
I know.
I can go back and see if my people are early. You stay till 5 on my desk.
Yeah, you can surprise them.
I like these chairs, but I don't know if they're wider or they, where they move to.